Workshop, we'll call it to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the land of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call please, Sally.
Mayor Gilmore.
Here.
Councilmember Coy.
Here.
And we are expecting Councilmember McPartlin, who is not here yet. The city attorney and the city manager are also here. Thank you.
Okay, I want to welcome everybody to this workshop. What we're going to do is go around the... My name's Richard Gilmore, I'm the mayor.
Andrea Coy, Sebastian City Council.
Joe Griffin, City Manager, City of Sebastian.
Frederick Sager, Citizen of the City.
Judy McNamara, Sebastian Art Club President.
Darlene Cradwell, Sebastian Art Club Secretary.
Sebastian, Stepping Stones Quilt Guild, Natalie Arribas, President.
Devin Williams, I'm Community Service Chairman of the Stepping Stone Quilters, and I'm also with Quilter Valer.
Tina Caprow, Sebastian River Embroidery Guild Inc., and I am the president.
Bob Ginsburg, City Attorney.
Okay. The workshop item that we're going to be discussing today is the facility use agreement for the annex building for the Sebastian River Art Club, Sebastian Stepping Stones Quilt Guild, and Sebastian River Embroidery Guild. Just would like to lay down a little bit of history, I guess, for some of those, for all of you that are here. I believe, I can't speak for the quilters or the embroiders, but I do know that the quilting club started using the facility before we did. The quilting club, I believe, after the hurricanes of '04, went into the old chambers. I don't know exactly what year that was, but I do know that you were there before the art club. And I think it was, if I'm not mistaken, '09 that the art club went in? I'm not...
10, I think.
2010.
2010? Pardon me?
We had an agreement of 2005.
2005, you have an agreement with the city to go in there as a use for your, for the quilters. In 2010, the art club followed suit. At the time, there was a move afoot to destroy those buildings, to actually knock them down. And the city manager at that time, Al Minner, was looking that he would destroy those, knock those buildings down and make that whole area a parking lot. And we said, as far as the art club, we said, "Don't do that, we can rehab this one space." And so, we have an agreement with the city that dates from 2010 for the use of the art center. There are many organizations that use that space besides the art club and the quilters and the embroidery guild. The, I believe, the Power Squadron uses it, the Historical Society uses it for their meeting once a month.
Boy Scouts.
Boy Scouts use it, so, I mean, it's a well-used facility.
Right.
Okay? So with that, I guess, we'll open up the discussion.
Okay, I would like to add a little more to the historical perspective here because though I agree with everything that was just said, that the mayor provided, there's some little technical aspects to that history that I think we need to put on the table. And first, let me say, because there's a lot of stuff out there floating around about he said, she said, and what's the goals for all of this. I'm not out to kick anybody out of that building. It's not my goal. My goal is to legitimize the use of that building for everyone and to get a lease agreement going. So let's start with that premise. Let me also start and say, this was not my idea of a good time. I asked to sit down with the people here, but because the mayor wanted to be included in the conversation, we cannot have a conversation without being public. So we are here for that purpose. Consequently, some of the stuff that I'm going to ask today might be more better suited for sitting down in the manager's office. But we have come to this point, so I'm going to ask those questions that need to be asked. Historically, the reason the art club came, there's two meetings you need to watch. And I would suggest to all the people here who are really interested, you can request through Sally Mayo, the city clerk's office, a copy of May 12, 2010 meeting and September 8, 2010 meeting. Of particular interest to me is the September 8 meeting because that's where we made our decisions about what was going to be done specifically, the agreement. Now, that I use as a basis because in five years since that time, a lot of things have changed. And though initially, and let me add to the history too. Not only, I don't think, I kind of disagree that we were going to knock those buildings down. We were looking to maybe renovate them, maybe take them down. We had not, as a council, decided. So in these two meetings, several times to the art club, it was expressed, "You do understand that, hey, next year, we might take this away." Yes, yes, yes. And the only reason we entered into an agreement with them, and not necessarily with the quilters or the embroidery club, was because we were asking for, they were asking for specific sole use of the building, of the back half of the building, which will call, for lack of a better word, the gallery, right now.
No, I disagree. The better word is art center. May it be stated in the record, it's an art center.
Art center. Very well, whatever you want to call it, sir, that's fine.
Well, that's what's on the sign.
That's what's painted on the side of the building. But that's okay. Art center. So it's the western portion of the building, which was, I think, the old public works part, not the council chambers. That was what was discussed for exclusive use. That was the only thing on the table. At the time, on the September 8 meeting, the art club was asked, and this is by Councilmember Wolf, specifically asked, "Are, are, you have been called a nonprofit, you've been called a cultural club, you've been called all different names. What are you? Are you a nonprofit?" And a lady by the name of Toni Hill, is she here today, Ms. Hill? Bless her heart, she did a lot of speaking those two days, Ms. Hill? Not here. Okay. Stood there and said, "Yes, we are a 501(c)" She turned to the back of the room, then came back and said, "501(c)4", and assured us at council that there was a legitimate 501(c)(3) organization at the time. Is this all on disk, folks? I could take and waste our time right now and play this for you. That's why I brought my computer and the disk. I could play it for you. But you're all adults, I think, you really should watch those meetings because that specific question was asked, and are you a legitimate agency that we can enter into a contract with? Mr. Wolf asked those questions. Mayor Gilmore was mayor at the time for the city of Sebastian. He was also president of the art club, but he had to step down because as president of the art club, he could not vote. And that was wonderful. And oh, by the way, all four of us who remained on the dais were very excited to give the art club the building, that portion of the building. There was no qualms about it. What I'm interested now is, and I asked the current president, "Could she please provide that paperwork, 501(c)(4)? And the bottom line is, there isn't any. At the time, I can find no record of the art club being incorporated. Do you have any evidence of that?
On disk. Dot org?
I believe I do.
That's, yes, please note the date, mayor. The date this was filed, oh, it's interesting, you pulled that up. Because I have that copy. Here's where it gets very interesting. We gave the building over, the questions were asked on September 8, September 8, 2010. What I find interesting is that the initial incorporation of the art club, the very initial incorporation, did not occur until November 23, 2010, two months after. That's the discrepancy, folks, which is causing me to ask a lot of questions because that's a big discrepancy. There was no incorporation. Maybe it was a mistake. We thought we were a nonprofit. But what's disheartening to me is that when that, when the initial corporate documents were provided to the state and the initial incorporation went through, which you signed, sir. Your name's on the document. No one...
Oh, you know we're a corporation then?
I know you're a 501... What kind of corporation are you, sir?
We're a 501(c)(7), I believe.
No.
Nonprofit.
You're a 501(c)(3).
No, we're not.
Show me the c7 documents.
We have the 990s.
Where we pay for...
We spent, let me just give you some history. We spent thousands, literally thousands of dollars going after 501(c)(3). This was as at a time when nobody was getting 501(c)(3) through. If you recall, there was a big mess and some folks were fired or moved around in the IRS because they were pressuring the, they were pressuring to not give out 501(c)(3)'s to anybody, anybody that would be conservative, that is. We spent thousands of dollars with attorneys and with tax lawyers trying to get the 501(c)(3). And this whole process started in May of 2010. We, we found out that it would be easier to go for a 501(c)(7). And that's indeed what was offered. We have, we are a 501(c)(7), which is a hobby club, it's a nonprofit. We are listed as a non...
Sir, I have that, I have all of that.
Okay. So, we are a nonprofit corporation.
Yes, you're a 501(c)(3).
No ma'am.
Here's your articles of incorporation. I've got them in my hand, dated the same date you have there.
Okay.
10 November, 23 November, 2010. Went through Dylan Evans.
That's right.
Yeah, see? This is your articles of incorporation that if you punch that button right there, this will come up.
Sure, and that's...
Excuse me.
Can we...
I have a letter here from the IRS that states, "We cannot recognize your organization as the kind described in code section 501(c)(3). As a result, the internal revenue will treat your organization as a taxable entity."
As a taxable entity?
We are not...
So you're not a nonprofit?
Wait a second. Just, we are a nonprofit. We're a nonprofit in the state.
But we're just not a...
We're a 501(c)(7). These were filed with the state of Florida and consequently, the IRS didn't allow us to be a 501(c)(3). We refiled as a 501(c)(7) and that's indeed what we are.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
What difference does it make if you're a nonprofit, a 501(c)(3), a 501(c)(7)?
Taxes.
What difference? Taxes on what? If you don't sell stuff, there is no tax.
But there is stuff for sale. And, but, but still...
We don't sell our stuff.
I'm not talking, I'm not, I'm addressing the art club. So embroidery and quilters, turn off the radio. Okay, this is art club. It really is not you, okay? And there's other stuff. Trust me, people, it's not too late. And Mayor Gilmore, it's not, if you want to, if you want to cut this off now so that I can sit down with the, with the president of the club and discuss this and we can come to an agreement, otherwise, there's going to be a lot of me pulling out documents and saying, "Here's what we have." It would be far better if I can sit down with the president of the organization and do this first before we discuss a lease. I'll give you that option, sir. I would far prefer sitting down.
Can you pass this to Mr. Gilmore, please?
Can't we resolve the issue with the embroidery club and the quilting group and the quilts of Valer?
I'm willing to do that. But, but see, that's, you don't have a lease agreement. Do you want to enter into a lease agreement?
Sure, I don't have a problem doing that and I'm sure everybody sitting at the table doesn't have a problem doing it.
Well, I think, I think here's, here, the whole crux of the matter is, is, and I've talked to the quilters and I've talked to some of the art members, of which I'm a member, no longer on the board of directors, I'm not a, not an officer. But here's the thing. Everybody says, "If it's not broke, why fix it?" Everybody is getting along. We're not having any problem scheduling. We're not having any problem with the art club. The art club gets along with the quilters, the quilters get along with the art club, we get along with the embroiders. There's, if there's a scheduling, we adjust. They adjust to us, we adjust to them. So I don't see, and Judy, could you find that agreement that we have with the city? Is this it?
That's just a copy, we didn't get a finalized copy.
It was assigned.
Oh, yeah, it was. We have a signed, we have a signed agreement with the city.
I'd like to see that.
Right here.
That's the senior center.
Is that the senior, hold on.
That's the senior center.
Oh, you want the art club. I beg your pardon, I have to move to the next file.
You got the art center? We have the same thing for the art center. Not the lease.
There was no lease, sir.
No, I'm saying it's an agreement. We have a signed agreement from Al Minner.
I'd like to see a copy of that.
I saw it yesterday.
It wasn't signed. That was what we have.
It wasn't signed, I know.
It was signed.
It was a draft.
It was an agreement.
Toni had it.
Toni had it, yeah.
And that's what she gave.
But it was a draft, it wasn't signed.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. And I'm telling you, Mr. Mayor, honestly, I'm going to, I would far rather iron all of this out with the president of the art club and the secretary and any of the board, the whole board, if they want to come. I would rather sit down and go through my questions with them rather than waste everybody's time and me being pulling, I've got lots of papers I can pull out. Here is the second iteration. This is your amendment, this is your amendment that you insist you're a 501(c)(7). Here is your amendment to your articles of incorporation, you signed, and this is dated 2012, two years after the initial, and it's 501(c)(3). You signed this, sir.
Yeah, we refiled and we...
As a 501(c)(3).
Well, we are not a 501(c)(3). I'm telling, if you want to call me a liar, call me a liar.
I'm not calling you a liar, I'm saying you're confused and I think...
No, I'm not confused.
What Toni had said on that agreement was, everyone was given that copy, everyone signed it, but no one got copies of their signature after it was, after it was signed.
What's that, the agreement?
The agreement.
We didn't sign the lease agreement. It's in the minutes of the meeting. September 8 and May 12. I really suggest that people need to go back and watch the meeting so that we can talk apples and apples. I want a lease with everybody at this table, okay? But first, I want to know that there's legitimate 501(c) something, nonprofit.
Why does it have to be a 501(c)(3)?
Why, because you're, you're... If you want exclusive use, or, maybe you don't need one, but they have exclusive use. You might not need a lease. Your side.
We're willing to sign a lease, I have no objection to that.
You might not need one though because you don't say, "This is ours, we want it" the whole time. They have a portion of our building for exclusive use. And I'm sorry, I, everyone else who exclusively uses our facilities, like at the airport where we rent, and we have lease agreements. So if the art club is going to exclusively use for their own purpose, there should be a lease. For five years, the art club has had exclusive use.
And we're fine with that. We're fine with a lease. That painting was reconstituted by the art club. It was a mess before we refurbished it. In the last three years, we've given close to $10,000 to charity.
I think that's wonderful. I'm not here to discuss that. I want a lease, but I want to know what, I want your paperwork straight. And what I'm finding, and even just now, is that we don't, you don't even know what you are.
Ma'am, I know what I am. We're a 501(c)(7). That's what we are.
And the IRS accepts our payments under a 501(c)(7).
Please, no, don't clap me.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor, okay. There's, there's a lot of questions with regard to what the art club is or is not. Okay, my question is directed to Andrea, okay? Andrea, according to the papers that are filed with this state, you are the president of the senior center.
That's correct.
But you also hold a position on the council.
That's correct, so I can't take a vote. I cannot vote, just as the mayor could not vote, anything that comes...
But shouldn't you excuse yourself from this whole proceeding?
We're not here...
Don't you have a biased opinion on everything that's going on here?
Please, no, don't clap, don't clap, no, no clapping.
Hold it, hold it. We're not here discussing the senior center, folks. I don't know why, there's a senior center lease. We have a lease with the building. That's, that's oranges. We're not, and, oh, by the way, I didn't ask the seniors to come. I did ask two officers of the senior center board if there are any questions so that they can answer them and I don't have to. There's no conflict. Mr. City Attorney, is there, do I have a conflict here?
Not at the workshop, no.
Not at the workshop?
This is a workshop.
Yes, but I'm saying, for clarification, not at the workshop.
Would, would, if this same discussion of a lease, would it be...
No, no, the way that the state law reads, it's a voting conflict issue. So you wouldn't be able to vote. If it, if it came to a vote...
I can't vote on an art club lease.
On a senior center.
I can't vote on a senior center lease. I get that. I get that. And I'm not, we're not here to discuss a senior center lease.
Right.
But I can vote on an art club lease.
Correct.
So...
Can I ask one question? What is the senior center? What, are they 501(c)(3) or...?
Yes. And, and the books, here's, here's the books. There's officers back there. We have the vice president and the treasurer is there with the books. And that's, that's the other question that I think is a legitimate question for the general public and for members of council. At least, I'm interested. I know you're successful. I just read your newsletter, Judy. Great newsletter, you know, I went on and I've gone to your websites and stuff. I think what you do is wonderful. $800 to the ecumenical council. Thank you, thank you, thank you, for the food drive. That's a wonderful cause. But I think if we're going, I think we have a right to look at some of those, at some of the finances. How much money did you take in? How much did you spend and where did it go? You teach art classes, you know, some of the questions I have are... How many members do you have?
160 plus.
And how, and how much do you charge for fee? Membership fee?
$25.
Okay. And, and so, you have sources of revenue? You have dues that come in? You, you, you charge a fee for the display in the art center, right? For people who put their work up? So there's...
$5.
$5, okay, so there's, there's revenue there. You, do you charge exhibitors in the park?
No.
No, so that's free. But if they, if, if they sell a piece of work, I think I read somewhere in your materials that if an artist sells a piece of his or her work, you get a percentage?
We ask them to make a donation.
Okay. So, I mean, you have revenue. There's revenue coming in. And there's probably expenses. I'm sure you pay for artists. You know, how are they paid?
We pay for judges and things like that and it's paid out of, out of the treasury.
When you, when you give an art class and, your art classes, they cost money and you're giving them in a public building. It costs, according to the newspaper... Oh, and yes, it's a press journal, look at that. I do read it once in a while. The art club advertises $15 to $20 on Tuesday and Thursdays. So you collect from the people coming in. Do you pay the artist?
We pay the art club a part of that. Whoever the artist is that collects the money, that teaches, they pay the club, they give the club a percentage of that donated.
Okay, so they collect the money and then they take it in cash? Be careful. Again, we really should talk about this. This is stuff, I think, we should know. You know, how are you collecting money? I can, I can have someone show you the senior center's finances, all the income and where it went and what it was from and how it went out. and where it went and what it was from and how it went out.
Do we really want to get into this?
I do, yes.
I don't know why. I can't understand.
Because you don't seem to even know that you're a 501(c)(3), Mr. Mayor.
Because, ma'am, because we're not. We're 501(c)(7).
Oh, God.
Okay? Look it up. Just saying. I know, I was...
I have it right here in my hand.
Ever you don't. You don't have the, because I know the whole process. It was a long, laborious process to get the 501(c)(7).
Here, let's give this, let me give this to the attorney.
That says 501(c)(3). That's what we were trying to get. That's not, that's not what we got. You didn't listen to Judy McNamara when she said we were trying to get a 501(c)(3).
You got it.
It was denied.
No, no, no. We spent over a year and a half trying, going back and forth through the IRS letters, this, that, and the other thing. And finally, they said, "We can't get, make you a 501(c)(3). We, we applied for 501(c)(7), which is a, a nonprofit hobby club.
Wouldn't that be here in Sunbiscuit?
No, ma'am. It would not.
Oh, where, where would that be?
Well, it's on, it's, I don't really care. I know, I know what it is. And I, this is a witch hunt. It's a, it's a witch hunt and we don't want to go there. You know, our, we're nonprofit and that means if you want to come over and look at our finances, we will be glad to have you come over and look at it.
That was my intent, but you wanted to be in on this meeting, sir.
No, no, no. I wanted, I, I did. I want to be in here to find out what's going on because I'm a member of the art club. And I'm hearing bad things.
That's the thing. I don't know who's saying that.
Well...
I, I heard that. I have hearing aids now.
Okay. So I don't think we need to get this to be, to be a witch hunt. I don't want to look at you, I mean, you know, we'll, we'll be happy to make it, we'll be happy to make it a time...
Let me ask, let me ask the city attorney. According to those papers, what is your interpretation of what they are?
It's irrelevant because that's not the papers that actually are filed.
No one is producing the fu... Give me a copy of the filed papers. That, that'll solve the problem, sir.
Okay. Well, we'll make an appointment and show you the papers.
You're here. You can't be at that unless it's a public meeting. Mr. Ginsburg, do you have an opinion? Okay. I still want to see them. And I still am suggesting...
That's fine. We'll make, we're, we're, we'd be happy to sit down. Judy will sit down with you. We'll have the treasurer sit down. You can look at everything.
Great.
Okay?
Then we don't need to do this meeting. We can do it. We can have that discussion. We can have a couple of discussions very quickly, but there's no need for public opinion. Everyone agrees you should have a lease, but I want some questions answered. As long as you give me permission to sit down with your board and answer those questions.
You don't need permission. We're a nonprofit.
All you have to do is come and ask.
I did, and he insisted on being at the meeting and you just heard him say...
Yeah, but you could have come to us. We are the art club.
I did. I asked him...
No one ever, you have never, you have never approached me. You've never introduced yourself until today and you have been on her...
You and I have talked. We've had a meeting.
No, we haven't.
Yes, we have. And, and the art club went about...
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. That one time about the garden, the only time that you came up was at the garden.
And Judy, I know you think that this came up, but I sent an email to the city manager requesting to get in touch with you, the quilters and the embroidery folks, to set up a meeting. I, that's public record too. Sally Mayo can, can get that. I sent that on Thursday, but before he got to contact you and invite you to a meeting?
Well, that was my fault. I went to jail.
Okay.
And we hadn't somewhat of been meeting, but because there were so many issues, it was thought better to do it this way. Am I correct, Joe?
Yes and no. At that meeting, we decided, and Frank Watanabe was there, the city engineer, just because he was in the hallway and I drug him in there, it was decided that we would have a meeting with Councilmember Coy. The mayor, I, I informed the mayor about that, that afternoon, and he expressed to me that he wanted to be part of that meeting. When that happens with two elected officials together, I now have to ensure that everybody is protected sunshine law-wise, and we had to make it a public meeting. So that's, that's why we're here.
And so, folks, I don't know why, I, I'm assuming you're all art club because I, seniors...
No.
Okay. But I, you know, a lot of brouhaha was made because I asked to have a meeting.
Because we were gonna get thrown out.
I asked to have a meeting. Who told you you were gonna get thrown out?
I guess maybe because you go over and you were in there the other day going around saying you're all, you were gonna make all these changes in the room and she got all upset.
Did you not come into the building last Monday?
I did. I haven't been in that building in...
Right. And looked around and I can't state verbatim what you said.
I can.
But I, you said, "Oh, yes, because Devin asked you, 'Can we help you?'" You never introduced yourself. Now, I know who you are, but I don't, I'm not sure if Devin does.
I've been there occasionally. I wasn't making any changes. I, and that's true.
You did. But you did.
You said you were gonna change the ramp and get rid of the stage because...
Stop, stop, stop. Verbatim conversation. I walked in the back door, got a, "Can I help you?" And actually, it was, wasn't quite that polite, but...
No, it was that polite.
Okay. But, but I said, you know, "What, what do you want?", you know, "What do you want?" And I said, "I'm just refreshing my memory on what the stage looked like."
Right.
Because we've talked about, the city manager and other quilters have talked about getting rid of that stage.
No, other quilters haven't. Because you have to direct such things to a president.
All right, wait, 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 wait. Okay, but it's still...
Not to individual members.
Just a minute.
Excuse me. Let me finish.
Sure.
Every time you've come in, and I've been there a lot of times, okay, where you have come into the quilting guild, okay, you don't seek out the president. You talk to the first one that comes near you, okay? They don't represent that guilt. She does because she's the president. Just like you come in, okay? And at the time that you came in on Monday, Devin was the one that you talked to because she's the head of charity. She's also the head of the Division for Quilts Valor that both her and I do. It's called respect.
I answered you. Hold it. I wasn't coming in to make a modification or close the bill.
No, yes, you did because you said, "Well, all of your cronies want this done." Who, who said that?
No, 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 no. Look, we have talked about...
Compadres. I beg your pardon. Compadres.
Okay, compad...
Okay. So who are they?
Listen, other quilters have mentioned it. We have talked, doesn't, we can renovate that building anytime.
I understand.
And by the way, it really needs renovating.
I understand that.
The rug, it, it's a disaster. It's a horrible representation for...
But you know what? The bottom line is that we're very happy that the township, all these years, have given us a place where we can quilt.
I would love to provide you a nice place.
We can do Quilts Valor.
Wait. Hang on. And I'm not intending to take it away, folks. I want to renovate it and give you a nice place, like the Senior Center. It can be done.
We're happy with the place that we have.
Well, it's not so happy for city to have Power Squadron, the Boy Scouts, to come in and look at such a nasty, nasty building. It's horrible in there. Horrible.
No, it's not that. It's not horrible. The carpet could be replaced, but other than that, it's well-maintained.
Okay. Carpet replaced. It needs new tables and chairs. And what about other organizations? This is what we have to talk about, about the lease. And who are we going to lease it to? Do we lease it to, there's a whole bunch of people who want in. Woodcarvers just contacted him. Who, where do we draw lines? This all needs to be discussed. Who gets in on this?
How about everybody? Because we all have different dates and times.
Very good. I don't disagree with that. But don't you think when we give someone exclusive use, that there should be a separate lease? I don't know that you necessarily need a lease. I don't know that you do.
Well, after this, I would prefer a lease, to be honest with you, because then everything is in writing.
It protects you.
Yeah, it does.
I don't disagree with that at all. It protects you for a certain period of time. I agree.
And the Senior Center was able to get a lease that goes, I think, until 2018. So you had a five-year lease.
They have a five-year lease.
So it comes up for renewal in...
So can we have a five-year lease and be done with this meeting?
Well, first we need, I'm asking to see, I, again, I think this, I think this whole meeting, we should just call for the council and present it at council for voting. Because I don't, do you disagree that, that there should be a lease?
I think there needs to be a lease.
Okay. So we need, we all agree there should be a lease. Is it, I don't think it's anyone's intent, and I've always said it's not my intent, to exclude any of you. I'm not trying to kick you out. So whoever's going around saying Andrea wants you out is just flat wrong. And if that's why you're all here, you wasted your time.
Well, then why did you come into quilting last year and express to somebody, "Well, I'm gonna redo this building like I did that one and you can pay a dollar when you come in and then I'm gonna put a cover walk away."
I suggested that maybe they, they set it up that way because it didn't cost anything to this, well, very, very litty, little for the city.
But don't you feel that you're, you're...
I feel I have a good track record in, in redoing a building. I mean, there's no doubt about that.
Well, that's fine, but you're treading on other people's grubs.
And if I'd like to share, if I'd like to share that, is that so wrong?
No, but you're treading on other people's grubs.
You're trying to tread. You can either share and listen or you can just yell. I want to share that. I want to share it and do it again and replicate it.
That's not a way to share. I mean...
You don't explain yourself the way you say you're explaining yourself now. No one ever asked me and it's all informal. You're taking it that I want you out. How many times do I have to say, "I don't want you guys out. It's not my intent"? Well, somebody's... There's a couple of people that were saying that. And Judy, I'm sorry that, because of events, I want you to see that email. I asked him to set it up with you specifically, but it was overcome by events. So I look forward to sitting down with the board and ironing out the 501(c) stuff.
We'll get all of that in line for you.
And, and I'd like to see finances. I think we have a right to that. You disagree?
No, we have them all.
Okay. That would, that's all I wanted to do and look at what it's turned into. Here we are. Forty-five minutes. I want a lease. I think we should model it, the, the lease that, that the, the Senior Center has, viable model, but not until, uh, you know, I, I, there's some splainin' to do because I could roll this up and show you on TV the meeting where it says, where, "Ask specific questions. Are you a legitimate agency?" And bless her heart, Ms. Hill, lovely lady, said, "Yes, we're a 501(c). Look to the back of the room. C(4)".
Well, C(4) is a government agency, so that was wrong.
Well, when, when, when the paperwork went in as a C(3) on the initial paperwork that was filed on November 23rd, eight weeks later, no one thought to, it would be important to anyone on council just to make a note, "Oop, we were wrong. We weren't registered." And in fact, they weren't anything. There wasn't registered as anything. But no attempt was made to clear the air. There's a lot of muddy water, Judy, and I'd like to clear the water. That's all I want to do. Embroidery, quilters, I don't have a problem.
Oh, I think they probably need a lease now, for sure.
Oh, yes.
Only, maybe not. That's gonna be up to council if they have exclusive use. Because do the Boy Scouts need a lease? Maybe not. I don't know. That, maybe not. But if you do need a lease, that's fine.
We don't want one exactly like the Senior Center has, though. We do feel that we are not in the same category because of all the community service that we do. We are different. So we would request the longer-term lease that has been mentioned.
So, well, yeah, it'd be probably a sublease or something like that.
Yeah. And we would prefer nominal payment since we provide a lot of community service. And if you'd like, I'll leave this with you because it means...
Dollar a year, could you handle that?
All the community service.
We can handle that.
Okay.
Yes.
Again, this is, you know, ideas and that's refreshing that we're coming to the table and discussing ideas.
All right. So is it...
I'm, I'm not so sure that, 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 well, I don't know. Let me ask you, do you think sublease is necessary for anyone who uses the, the facility? So the Boy Scouts would need it? The Power Squadron, the Historical Society does have their meetings there? But then, then the art club would be subleasing to that side unless, because they don't have exclusive use. That was another thing. The art club was given one space and it kind of morphed. And now your spa, the, the space that it was given is the art club side of the building. That's on tape. And, oh, by the way, it's in... There's drawings of the space. There's one meeting. And here's drawings. There's another meeting, okay, of what was requested. But, but now it's gone into other areas so that...
What other areas would that be?
The, well, where the quilters are.
We, we are on the schedule for that, just like they are. We asked to be on the schedule and we're in there at certain times, certain days.
I'm saying, it's, it's, it's morphed. If you listen to the schedule, listen to the, the record, for the record, you asked for the building space, the art center specifically, to have places to paint.
No, no, that's not true. That's not true.
Please, Mr. Mayor, you've got to listen to the tapes before you make these statements.
Let me just, we were in there before we requested the space for the art center. We were there, in there, we were, we were painting in there for at least a year before we requested it.
And having our meetings.
Having our meetings in there. And the quilters can back that up. Now, we don't have a document to show you, but I, I can, I mean, we can get people to say, "Well, yeah, you were painting in there." We don't paint in the art center. The art center's for hanging in.
But, Mr. Mayor, I'm saying you requested the art center for that. I mean, it's right here written. It says, "Gallery, classroom, office, and library." Gallery slash classroom. Revolving gallery.
Yeah.
Gallery, gallery, but classrooms. And, and on the, on the tape, it says, "You, you need the space because there's not enough room to paint, to, to paint in the other room. You had to move it all the time."
And we do use that one, one gallery sometimes for classes. That's true.
Okay. That's great.
But I, you know, I just...
I'm just saying it morphed. It morphed into more.
It didn't morph into more. It did not. That is absolutely false. And you're not, and you're not there every, every time we're there, so you can't say that it morphed because it didn't.
So you don't hold classes Tuesdays and Thursdays?
Some days, yes. Some Tuesdays, some Thursdays.
Okay. And, and it's in the big gallery or it's in the big room?
If we get permission from the city, yeah, we have it there.
Okay. I've got the calendar. And, and so every Tuesday and Thursday, you have it reserved.
Yeah, and that's true.
Yeah. That's our days, just like the quilters.
And we have it reserved before we, we...
And Saturday.
So I'm just saying it morphed.
No, ma'am, it did not.
We're growing. We've gone from seventy-five members when I joined to a hundred and sixty-some members. Of course, it's gonna be, get bigger, but we were already in there before the gallery or the art center on that West End even started. We were in there holding our meetings, doing what we do before that even came to pass.
And that, and that was, that, that whole room was, I mean, that area was a mess.
Yeah. It was like a collection dump of everything that everybody wanted to get rid of.
Agreed.
And, and, you know, we didn't ask for a penny from the city. We did all that hard work ourselves.
That's right.
The sweat equity with it, we put into that is something that I'm sure that all our members remember. I mean, there were, there was, some of the walls looked like you shot with a shotgun. There were so many pinholes in there and, and stuff that we had to redo the, the plaster on the walls, painted the whole thing, commercially cleaned the carpet, took down doors, put up doors, you name it. I mean, all of that was done at no charge to the city. We, you know, we're good stewards of that property. And I, and I thank you for bringing this up because I would think that we deserve a lease for the art club, for that space going forward.
And I don't, I'm not arguing that. If you can show me paperwork for your organization...
No problem.
Okay. Then, then I think we're done, Mr. Mayor. Let's, let's, let's end this nightmare until we can sit down. And I'd like to sit with you guys. Really, I'm harm, harmless. He'll be in the room. Let's talk about ideas. And, and let's bring it back. And we'll, we'll do this again. We can either do a workshop, or we can do it on the council dais where, where we can take a vote. But I think we need, yeah, I hear another workshop. I, I agree. I think we should do another workshop. Once we come up with some ideas and we can throw ideas on the table and have some consensus. And get rid of this nonsense that Andrea Coy is trying to get you out of the building. I want you in the building legitimately. Legitimately, that's all. And I want to make sure your paperwork is right. That's all. So, I'll help you all. I want to help. I don't want, I don't want to be. So stop making me the real bad guy. I'll be bad if you want to treat me like the bad guy. I can be a bad guy. You want to make me one? I don't want to be the bad guy. I want to help you. I want to give you your lease. I want to renovate the building at the least cost to the public. I want to give you a nice place to have your meetings.
It is nice.
Come on. Come on. That carpet's nasty, nasty. And oh, by the way, there's some other things that could go on there nights that it's not used. If, if we had a decent floor, if we had... Oh, I don't know, there might be some line dancers, wood carvers, wood carvers. I don't know, but there are other organizations out there who might like to use that building. And it, why not provide it? So if no one at this table objects, can we end this meeting?
I'm, Bob, I got any problem. We can do this another time. We can do the dance one more time.
May I make a comment at this time?
Absolutely.
My name is Frederick Sager, and I'm a citizen of the city. And I represent a group of wood carvers. You've mentioned that.
Oh, you're it.
And we've been trying to get into that building for, during inclement weather, basically. A lot of us go down to the park and carve down there and clean up after ourselves. And I was kind of hoping, in a positive way, like it's been stated in the last few minutes, a, a way of providing that service to us. We do not sell on the market, you might say, our carvings. We do a lot of work for hospice. We carve hospice birds for those that are ending their lives. We do not charge for that. We do canes, eagle canes, for the veterans who have received the Purple Hearts. And that is for free.
They're gorgeous.
We just had a ceremony last weekend. It was a pretty outstanding ceremony down in Vero Beach. And we also do trophies for environmental studies of the young people that compete to do various things with the environment. And so we're quite happy to do those things because it's, it's a form of art and it expresses our joy of being able to do good things.
Actually, the Art Club had an exhibition of wood carving about a year ago, if I'm not mistaken.
I didn't see that. I'm sorry. I wish I had. And, but it's not, provides people with some... If you just don't have a place to go when it gets cold, it's, it's not good. It's not conducive. So that's what I was looking into it, and I found out about this. I hope they get their lease. I hope maybe they'll share a little space with us. There's only a few of us here in Sebastian, but there are a lot of them down in Vero. This is our closest place or venue. And I think that helps promote the artistic ability of this, this community. There is a lot of talent out there in all forms of artistic capabilities. And we don't want to lose that. Thank you for letting me speak. I appreciate it.
Thank you. So I think if I'm hearing correctly, what we'll do is do this again sometime.
Okay, in the meantime, I'm free Friday. You got, how's your schedule? How are, how are you ladies?
Friday, we have quilting. Oh, campus quilting.
Thursday, tomorrow. I'm free tomorrow.
Then we'll show you how to embroider.
Tomorrow, what do you have tomorrow?
Nothing.
Nothing, honey.
In the morning?
I can do it in the morning. I'm free.
Can we do it in the morning tomorrow?
Please bring, and we'll, we'll make copies of, though I have stepping stones, we'll make copies of the 501 whatever, if you have your articles of incorporation. Please bring the C7s.
I will try to get it.
And see you tomorrow at...
9:00?
9:00?
9.
City manager's conference room.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, there's some questions in the audience.
Are we allowed to ask questions?
Sure.
My name is Dan Lavallo.
It's not on. Wait a sec, wait one second so we can hear you.
Is green light on, sir? Okay.
Hello, testing?
There it is.
My name is Dan Lavallo. Can you, can someone tell us what prompted the looking into this in the first place?
Uh, yeah. For a long time, it's, I've had the discussion with the city manager probably for the last six months. What about an Art Club lease? Because there's a sole, they're the, the only use. So for quite some time, I think even longer than that, and there might have been some mention at council. I'm not sure. Has it come up at council? No.
I'm sorry, ma'am, but that didn't answer my question. My question was, why did this come up in the first place?
I brought it up.
They've been in there since 2010 with an agreement with the city.
No, there's no agreement. There, there's a verbal handshake.
That's an agreement.
Okay.
Is the opportunity on your end to get a lease and try to collect money? You're asking for financial information from a group that has an agreement to use facilities and aren't being asked to pay for it. What difference does it make whether they make money or not?
Well, there's some citizens' questions, and, and, and my question as a council member, too. There's some tax issues. I just want to make sure taxes are okay.
Because, because the city has some liability if they don't pay taxes?
They, they do.
They do?
Yeah.
The city has liability?
If there's a tax obligation and the city knows that the taxes are not being collected... And oh, by the way, nonprofits are required to collect taxes in certain circumstances. And I'm going to give you an example because some people say, "Oh, we're nonprofit. We don't have to pay taxes." Let me, let me use the Women's Club Halloween House as an example. You know that they set up on Main Street there every year. Admission is $6 or whatever it is, includes taxes. At the end of that event, they have to send the state taxes for every admission to that Halloween House. That, that boggled my mind. I, I didn't think, you know, hey, they're collecting it, they give all this money away, it's a nonprofit. But even though they give all that, turn around and give all that money away, they have to collect taxes. And oh, by the way, they have to send it in. So let's just make sure. Why would you not want to dot your i's and cross your t's?
Because it's like going to Walmart and asking Walmart to open your books. I want to see if you're paying your taxes.
Walmart's not asking to use public property for free. Walmart pays taxes and they pay for their facility. Walmart is not using public property.
So are you going to go to every business in the town?
No, I'm not going to any business. They're private corporations and they have their own, they have their own...
I'm sure that's what they'd...
The copy that we gave you showing from the state that we pay our, our 990s every year, isn't that telling you that we're paying what we...
The 990, the e-postcard is a very, an e-postcard filings doesn't tell me how much. It just means you've made less than X number of dollars. And it doesn't say, don't you think that the public has a right to see your books?
And they do. We're nonprofit. Anybody can come in.
Okay, so why are you, you know, why are you objecting?
I wasn't. I was just asking a question.
They don't have any problem with that. But sir, if you want to blame somebody, I'm the one who brought the lease up. Everyone else in the city who has exclusive use of one of the city buildings, everyone else except the Art Club has a lease.
I would also submit to you that probably people who are on a schedule and ask for permission to use city property don't require a lease. You're letting them use your facility.
I think that's, that's probably a safe, I kind of agree with you, but I want to discuss that more.
And I'd also like to ask a question about the carvers. Can you do that on new carpeting? Okay.
Who says it's going to be carpet? I didn't say carpet. I said the old carpet is nasty.
My name is Harry Smith, and I used to be a president of Sebastian. One of the things I noticed tonight, you guys are up there talking about all this stuff, all these numbers and programs and papers. Nobody out here knows what these papers are. Why don't you start the meeting by explaining what the papers are you're looking for and looking at, what Andrea has up there? Let everybody know what you're looking at.
And, and sir, you're absolutely right. I apologize.
You know, guys never started the meeting out by saying what we were here for and what was going on and what's happening. And it's going to go right through the city council as everything else does when it goes to a vote.
No, we've promised to come back to another workshop.
Let's go.
We're coming back here.
But do the same, but don't do it the same way. Open it up and let us know, everybody, what's going on, what the paperwork is, what you're looking for, what's going on.
Absolutely. Not a problem.
Good evening. Brian Lynch, a member, I live here in Sebastian. And my question to Andrea is, when you meet with these people, with the quilters and the, and I want to be there as a concerned citizen, I want to be there and hear what you say. Thank you.
Give me your phone number. I'm going to talk to the city manager. That, that, now we're coming into another venue. I'm not so sure. Because if you come...
What's transparency in government, yes? If you're a government official and your question...
Okay, all right, well... Okay, we'll, we'll sit right here at this table tomorrow.
That's exactly right.
Tomorrow at 9:00, we're all sitting here.
Every you want, I'll be here with bells on.
Sir, I just said, okay, tomorrow, 9:00. It's not a, there will be no other council members here, so we're not broadcasting. And, and we're not recording because no other council member will be here. But you're, you're welcome to sit. Okay, see you tomorrow. Nothing, I guess.
There will be an audio recording.
My name's Pat Goodfellow.
No.
I'm vice president of the Senior Activity Center. To the folks at the Art Center, you want a lease. Okay, when we formed, we formed, our first meeting was October, or August the 25th, 2012. All of our paperwork, including our 501(c) application, which is a request to the federal government to exempt you from income taxes, to be exempt from state sales tax. Once you are approved by the federal government, you must apply with a form called an R-22 to the state of Florida to be exempt from sales tax in Florida. They will then give you a form that you can give to merchants when you buy things for your organization, not for personal use. Okay? That exempts you from collecting sales tax. For example, if I go in and buy 1,000 coffee cups for the Senior Activity Center at Walmart, I give them my form, I pay no sales tax. But as Pat Goodfellow goes into Walmart, as a member of the Senior Center, I can't buy those coffee cups without paying sales tax. So 501(c) is federal government exemption from, uh, sales tax. Okay? The R-22 is exemption from state sales tax. Okay, these are documents that if you're a legitimate company, you need to have a federal employee number. That even though you don't have employees, there's a whole series of documents. To be a legitimate corporation, a legitimate entity, that you must satisfy the bureaucracy. Okay, so just, so you know, there's a lot of paper trail. When we went to the city, after we got all organized, we weren't thinking about a lease. We were just so happy to have a place to meet. Okay, we got our paperwork done. But it gradually began to dawn on us, who's responsible for the security of the building? We wanted to put up some new energy-efficient fans. We don't own the building. Can we do that? So finally, we went to the city, Mr. Minner, we said, "Look." And because of our history, how we were phased out of another building, people wanted some security around it. So we sat down with Mr. Minner, eventually with the city attorney. We gave them our documents, so they knew, they asked for them. And then they gave us a five-year lease agreement. We paid nothing for it, not even a dollar. But it spells out our responsibility for the building. It spells out the city's responsibility for the building. It tells us, for example, we can't sublet. We've had other groups that have approached us to come in and want to, to use our facility. I'll give you an example, Weight Watchers. They collect money. In our agreement, we can't do that. We can't sublet, so to speak. But we are protected for five years. Even though Mr. Minner said to us, "I don't think you're going to be here in five years." We had over 10,000 participant days last year. And we keep growing. The only thing we're doing is on the website. So you want that lease. It spells out your responsibility to the city and the city's responsibility to you. But you got to be a legitimate organ, and that's, I think, what I'm hearing said here tonight. I think that that's what Ms. Coy was saying. I think I heard Mr. Gilmore say, "Yeah, we want that lease." But you really do want it. It spells out your relationship with the city. It protects, we're, we're good for five years. We're golden. We're coming up in '18. I hope they're going to renew us, same terms. So, so folks, don't, don't make a, this is not a lot of heartache.
Hi there. My name is Stephanie Lavallo, and I'm a member of the Sebastian Art Club and very happy to be a member and proud. We have a wonderful place. At this time, I'm hearing a lot of negative things. And if anyone is watching and they, they have a visual of our facility, it sounds like a dirty, muddy place, doesn't it? Well, it isn't. It's a wonderful place. There's wonderful artwork there. And if you come to visit us, someone will meet you and they will give you a tour and you'll see good things. We have a scholarship. I know, I'm the chairperson of the scholarship committee. And we raise funds. We give a scholarship to the high school. We're the only group in Sebastian that gives an art scholarship. At this time, we've been giving $1,000 scholarship each year. And we're in the process now of trying to raise that to 2,000 a year or to two students. So we do good things for the community. We give to the food bank. We give to, we give to the animals in the community and people, and we help people. We're there, we're a warm fuzzy for the community, for the women and men in the community that are wonderful artists. We have professional artists. We're a good thing, and it's a beautiful place to come to. So don't think that it isn't because we all know it's a good place. Thank you.
She's right. She's right. She's absolutely right because the Art Center, where the pictures are hanging up, but it's not a gallery part, is beautiful. It is. You do take very good care of that. So I don't, I, I'm talking about the other side of the room as far as renovating. And in fact, I really had no intention of renovating your Art Center. That you have agreed to do. I, I, I don't think that's even on the table unless you bring it up. But again, I think that's something that the board, if we can sit down, let's iron out what we want. And then we'll bring it back here. Y'all come back. Y'all come back now. And then you can listen to what we've come up with and give your input if you like it, if you don't. And then we take it to council. And poof, you have a lease.
Sounds good. Think we can adjourn. One more, one more question. Comment?
Okay, um, my name is Carol Bennett, and I too... My name is Carol Bennett, and I too am a new member of the Sebastian Art Club, which I thoroughly enjoy. What I'm getting a sense of here, and maybe I'm putting the cart before the horse, is you would like us to get a lease. I can understand that completely. But it also sounds like you have a spatial concern of the, what we actually occupy. You pulled up a drawing before, and...
A lease would spell that out.
Okay, so, but are you thinking about putting us in a smaller, in that building? You are, I don't understand.
That's something we all need to just discuss on, on who does, that's what a lease will spell out. I don't have any intention of, I think the, the Art Center side, I, I kind of think that's sacred. That, that's yours, that, that side. I'm mostly talking, and, and I might be wrong, I can't speak for the whole council. But that really didn't come into my mind at all unless there's stuff you want for that side. But again, we have to talk.
Yeah, you just keep identifying it as the Art Center side.
I'm not thinking of squeezing anybody out of anything, but there's that other side of the building that desperately needs renovation. You might not be embarrassed, but I've walked in there a couple of times and it's not that pleasant.
The gentleman over there was first, yes.
I'm Carol Hunt. I'm a Sebastian resident. I belong to the quilt group. I belong to the embroidery group. This is not all Art Center for everybody who's watching this. And it is stated as an Art Center, and it's true because we make art with art quilts. We make art with art embroideries. So let everybody agree that the Art Center is correct. I know, Andrea, you keep reporting the Art Center, but it's all an Art Center for all of us. And maybe you'd want to find out how many quilters are here, how many embroidery people are here versus how many Art Clubs. And some people belong to all three. And I think it would be great if we all have our leases and it protects us for the future. Thank you.
Andrea, what is your intent on this whole thing? What are you after exactly, other than a lease?
That's a very good question. Thank you for asking. I'd prefer people ask rather than speculate. The goal is to come up with the, the lease, and that's number one. Two, look at how we're going to maintain that building. Who's going to pay for that? Does the city, is the city obligated? How do we pay for that? How do we renovate that? That's two. Three, who gets to use it? And if we give a lease, that means that at least for, let's say, five years, if it runs the Senior Center gamut, that means council can't tear it down. But right now, with your verbal authorization, please go back and, and watch those council minutes. We can take it down tomorrow at council's discretion and replace it or not replace it or...
And that goes for the Senior Center, too. You can knock that down, too, after the lease goes out.
After the lease goes out. But the lease would protect the Art Club and the quilters. So that, then you know it's not going away. So there's a lot of advantages. Pat Goodfellow was correct. It protects you. It protects the city. And then we don't start arguing with who gets to put art up in the park. And then we don't start arguing with who gets to put art up in the park. You know, is the park yours? Maybe, maybe not. We'll talk. What space belongs to the art club? What belongs to the quilters? What belongs to the embroidery folks? Yeah, let's do the mic.
If you were going to tear the building down, where are you going to put another building? And then how is it going to affect everybody at that point?
Well, council may decide to renovate that building. We've talked about renovating the building in the past. We've talked about doing a roof over that building in the past to make more space for activities, for these things. We've talked about it. And a condition... What's that? And the bathrooms. And we're redoing... We're redoing the bathrooms now, the ones, the handicap bathrooms, so that they're presentable. That was pretty awful, wasn't it?